I have everybody's attention, like we just need to start it. So our regular city council meeting in June twenty first two thousand sixteen. It is seven oh five P M. I appreciate everybody being here and taking up the audience and the council. Uh, this offering, you would please note that uh, Mr. Steven Gill is out of town, so he's not with us tonight, but we do have him on. And appreciate all the council being present and staff as well. Um, just, just a note for the audience, uh, we're, we're growing and uh, we've been asked by the bar marshal to adhere to a certain number of patrons in our facility. And so we're willing to start enforcing that rule. So if you're turning away at the door, it's not because we don't want you here, it's just someone got here before you did. And uh, we'll have someone out there to check, so if someone leaves and someone else can come in. We wanna make sure that everybody's safe and uh, if we ever have any issue, that we can all get out without problems and issues. So just to let you know, that's, that's why it's a little bit different in some aspects, so.
Mayor, if that's a concern, um, I certainly don't wanna turn people away from their government and their right to participate in their government. And so I'd ask that we consider moving our meetings over the Iron Curtain and make accommodations and so that the public can, can attend.
We are gonna look at that, we just have to take in some consideration, uh, security and safety for different areas, so. But we will take that consideration here. Move the item C, which is our application, uh, we had Father Dad scheduled to be here tonight, but unfortunately he couldn't make it. And in his presence, we had the Mr. Jacob Ramirez, and so kind of stepped in to fill out Father Dad's uh, role. So thank you for being here, and so if everybody would do stand for the application.
Lord God, as we gather here this evening, we give you thanks for the men and women who dedicate their time and service in public office for the good of the city. And tonight, we pray for your abundant grace and the gift of wisdom upon all here gathered as they deliberate and lead this community. We continue to pray for our brothers and sisters who are recently affected by the flood for their well-being and recovery. Together, we pray for your blessings of peace, security, and prosperity for our city and our nation. Watch over and protect our men and women who serve our country. To you, Almighty God, we place our trust and we offer these prayers. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, I think please pass on Father Dad, you missed it, but you did great job, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
If you will, join me in my pledge allegiance to the flag, and then we're also going to do the pledge to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm in the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Moving to section two, citizens' comments was offered, did anybody just sign them?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is often resistance to speaker council related to agenda and on agenda items. Speakers, speakers are advised that comments cannot be received on matters which are the subject of a public hearing. Once the hearing has been closed, speakers are required to register in advance and listen to their presentations for three minutes each, which Mr. Snams will uh, have a timer, so. Alright, looks like the first one is Mr. Ray Houston.
Right here.
Hey, Mayor.
Okay, sorry, three minutes. Well, I've been here for a part of law, from the city council and so forth. Uh, my taxes, I'm paying over twelve thousand dollars a year, plus I assure that I just cost you a lot of money. And uh, everything else costs you a lot of money. I don't have a sewer, I don't have water in my place, I'm still paying over twelve thousand dollars to the city. I've been okay, they've been fine, but I had bad health, my wife's had bad health, and a lot of my neighbors had bad health. And I'm talking now about the flooding of the Red Bird. We've got a lot of older people, a lot of children, and it flooded this time, the post showed how much water we had on the street to get out. They taped the very top with red and black tape. This time, water came up and went above the tape. That means there's over eleven feet of water at that point. If that's safe, if a house burns in our area during the flood, the house is gonna go to the ground. And if somebody had a heart attack, yes, what, the way to get them out is the helicopter. And it's very dangerous, and we've been putting up with this for a long time. And I keep myself and I doing something years ago when I was on city council, but we said it's not gonna happen again. It's not gonna happen again, but it keeps happening over and over again. And we know it's not when, it's, it's gonna happen again. Somebody's gonna die, house gonna burn down, the list of children. And we need to bring them up on city council every month and drive it and get a permanent solution to the problem. We go across a, a gas line with a road, we buy property, or whatever we have to do, go around it. But we need a way to get out, and we need to do it on a permanent basis. It's been asked to, and asked before, written on the agenda every month. Tell us what's going on, we're not expecting to be done yesterday, but in a reasonable length of time. Make the studies, let us know what the studies say, and let's do it. It's gonna cost us a few dollars, I think on the last speech that Tommy gave, he said it's gonna cost us a lot of money to fix this. That was one of the things he said, and we need to do it, very urgent, and I think of all my neighbors was thinking the same thing. So we're sick and tired of nothing happening, so let's get with it, get the job done, and if we do it, we work today. Thank you.
That's good, that's, that's a good thing.
I wanted to, just a few minutes to thank the council for putting the Red Bird Line Agenda Item that I requested at last month's meeting. And uh, also to personally thank Steven Gill, who's not here tonight, and I hope this is a recording for him. To personally thank Steven for all that he did for our neighborhood, I mean, he went above and beyond, and so did quite a few others. Uh, Frank and Jim Payne and Larry and, but quite a few did. So I wanted to personally thank them, but especially Jim Payne, Jeff was out there. And uh, my second concern was after my three Rs at last time's meeting. One was a recommendation for an engineering company being hired to propose the workable, effective, and efficient uh, solutions for the problem. And then I saw this draft on website, and it was talking about emergency access. I was very concerned that you might be possibly addressing emergency access and egress before you are addressing the solution to the problem. And my request is that the permanent fix and solution as proposed by the engineering firm be taken and set in concrete going first. Secondly, we deal with the emergency route after we know when the permanent fix is going to begin construction. And secondly, how much time it's going to take. Then we'll know what kind of emergency egress and ingress we need to uh, further. But I was very concerned that you seem to be taking the cart before the horse. And that was just my opinion, that the horse should come first. Thank you.
Looks like that was all that had signed up, you may as, didn't miss.
Mayor, could I just take a moment and introduce to council and also to the audience who do not know, this is our attorney right here, Kim Blake Kopecky. And I'd like to give y'all some credit as well.
You've been a wonderful lady. I agree, she's been helping out a whole lot, we appreciate everything, thank you for being here. Moving on to uh, section three, which is, uh, we're gonna, instead of business, I have a little bit of move. Instead of, section three being business items, we're gonna move uh, the consent items up to that just prior, so we take item four, or four three. So we can get some of our developers out here. Item four is a consent items, items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and are generally enacted in one motion with exception to the rule. Is that a council member who requests one or more items to be removed from the consent agenda for a set of discussion and action?
Mayor, I make a motion that we consider items B, C, D, E, and H separately.
Alright, so that leaves item A, item F, item G, item I, and item J. Moving those to the consent agenda, I'll read those where you were put. Item A is consent and approval of Pleasant Road, voluntary flat. Item F would be consent and approval of Tamron Section eleven, partial replat number one, voluntary replat. Item G is consent and approval of Christian Brothers Automotive Shop, voluntary flat. Item I is consent and approval of acceptance for utility extension serving commercial tract at FM ten nine three and FM fourteen sixty-three. And item J is consent and approval of acceptance for water, wastewater, and stormwater drainage in utilities for Creek Falls at Cross Creek Ranch Section one, Creek Cove at Cross Creek Ranch Section seven, West Cross Creek Bend Lane Extension number two, in Creek Falls at Cross Creek Ranch Section number six. So if we can take item A, item F, G, I, and J, and make that into one motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve items, consent items A, do you have any?
No.
A, F, G, I, and J.
Do we have a motion by Ms. Tristan, take item A, F, G, I, and J? And then we have second by Ms. Crinick, call for a vote, all those in favor? All those, any opposed? Nope, that, those items pass. Okay, we'll go back up and take item B, um, separately, which is consent and approval of voluntary states final flat.
Mayor, my question on that is, uh, the city engineer put a note, or somebody put a note, and there was a corrected flat that was needed and signed, and that was needed June first, two thousand sixteen, and we have building officials signing off almost two weeks prior to that. Has that, was that flat correctly received?
State engineer's due directly.
Yeah, all those, uh, David Linecker, our city engineer, on all those that had questionable things on it, the developers were able to get the corrections back to our city engineer, and they all worked correctly.
And that also got through Michelle's office, right? So that's, that's my question, if you look on, if you look on our cover sheets, it looks like we're bypassing Michelle.
Those don't go through her office anymore, uh, they come through my office.
Okay, then that brings up another question, where are we having the Shell's office sign off on it?
That was changed probably a little over two years ago, I think, uh.
Right?
The signature.
That she was.
Who is that signing that?
That's, that's from software.
Okay.
She's doing her, she's doing her, she's been doing the final review. Once we hire the community services director, that end up being responsible for the flat.
I make a motion to approve consent item B.
Do we have a motion to approve item B, by Ms. Crinick? The second by Ms. Tristan, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Uh, passes. Moving to item C, consent approval of willows at Cross Creek Ranch Section one, final flat.
Okay, I'm gonna get the same question on a lot of these, was the correction received, got your signature that's signing off? Cause again, there was the discrepancy between the, the two signatures.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, I know this is a, a plat for townhomes, how many of the units have zero line lines?
All, all the lots with willows have a side line of one side, uh, zero.
So I noted that, um, our engineer put, was there a picking request for the paving area to be increased? Can you tell us how that's gonna impact the parking and, and kind of logistics behind that?
Uh, CJ's already looked into this, and developer is adding extra parking to, to reserves in front.
Okay.
Yeah, the recommendation is to be increased paving, but we have a, in development, we have a variable that this is in our subdivision, cause that needs to be clarified. And so what we agreed with the developer was that we would stay, stick with standard twenty eight foot paving section, but they added additional parking in couple spots to facilitate that.
Right, I just wanna.
There's thirty one additional.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that they have parking for what they're trying to put in, I've never seen always an issue in the city. Um, thank you. I make a motion to approve item C.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Crinick to approve item C, the second by Mr. Murdaugh, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? That item passes. Moving to item D, consent approval of list across Creek Bend Lane Extension number three, final.
Okay, same, same thing, it said correction needed, and there was a date, so I didn't know if that had been answered or not.
That was the question on the paving section there as well, that was correct.
Okay, alright. I make a motion to approve item D.
Motion by Ms. Crinick, the second, okay. By Mr. Murdaugh, call for a vote, all those in favor of us saying aye? Any opposed? Item D passes. Moving to item E, consent approval of foster crossing, partial replat number one, final flat.
Same question, it was, was the correction made?
They're using business.
Okay, and this is in our ETJ, there's no chance of us running trunk lines out here for water and sewer? Cause I see that they're putting in stuff like wells.
Could be maybe, but it would not be cost effective if they tried to do so just to this profit.
Alright, I make a motion to approve item E.
Do we have a motion by Ms. Crinick, the second by Ms. Ridge, call for a vote, all those in favor of us saying aye? Any opposed? Item E passes. Moving down to the last item, H, consent approval of minutes from the April nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, and May seventeen, two thousand sixteen meetings.
Okay, on page seventeen, April nineteenth minutes, um, there's some verification, I'm not sure if this was just an internal scripter's note to it, just to yourself. Um, but Miss D, it says on the paragraph before the votes were recorded on item J, that it says, this is my amended grading without adding new numbers.
Which page did you say on?
Page ten. And I think the motion was made by councilmember Tristan to approve without adding new numbers, and it was seconded by a message. If that can just be realized jury like that. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item H with the amendment to April nineteenth minutes on item J's vote, that the motion was made by Tristan to approve resolution two thousand sixteen three oh two, um, without adding new members and delineating their responsibilities, the architectural design, and the remainder of that paragraph is, is correct.
We have a motion made by Ms. Crinick with the corrections to uh, April nineteenth meeting. The second. The second, Mr. Murdaugh? The second by Mr. Murdaugh, any questions?
Which one was on?
With the item J.
Could we just make a, make a motion, make a motion for?
Uh, call for a vote on item H. All those in favor of us saying aye? All the opposed, um, um, on a part of that, on the uh, May seventeenth notes, my last name has been spelled on item G on page four.
Make the correction, make seven, Mr. Murdaugh's, please. Discredit, amend your motion, and please.
Yes, and then a motion to approve item H, sorry. Approve item H with the amendment to April nineteenth minutes on page ten, just before the vote on item J, that Ms. Tristan made a motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen three oh two, without adding new members to the architectural design. The remainder of that paragraph is correct. I'd also ask that all scripter's errors for names and proper nouns be corrected.
Thank you. Do we have a second? The second by, it's Tristan, two questions. Clarifications, I'll give, may I have a call for a vote again? Uh, all those in favor of us passing item H by saying aye? Any opposed? Item H passes. Thank you, thank you for the honor to go take the consent first. Now we'll move to the business section, section three. Item A is consideration of possible actions to approve contract professional service related to the provision of information technology services in the city from City and CAP five. I believe that's Mr. Ross, thank you, thank you, sir.
Staff has been experiencing significant downtime and lost data due to computer network and IT service issues lately. It's, as time has gone on, it's become more and more apparent that the current IT service provider can no longer accommodate the needs of the culture staff, and we, we think it's time for a change. The city has effectively outrun the current provider. Staff solicited proposals from and that with two other prospective IT companies that provide new services to organize new variety and size. After careful consideration, CAP five technology services rose to the top based on their pricing scheme, background, and referrals from other cities. The new provider is more costly, but the quantity, speed, and quality and reliability of their services is what is strong means. Funding should be adequate for this year's remaining budget. For this provider, we have a goal plan to rise the budget for next fiscal year for council's consideration. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to terminate the contract with the current provider and enter into a contract with CAP five technology services as the new IT services provider. There are documents attached that have been reviewed, and comments were made by the city attorney that were incorporated into the documents in front. Thank you, have you answered any questions?
Okay.
Okay, I, um, last year during the budget, we heard a lot of different department managers regarding, um, their needs and issues that they're having, and they're looking at, you know, one server for the entire city, I mean, just so many different things that they looked at. Are they going to come in and address that and see how they can change those things to be better? Or are they come in, or they just going to kind of take over IT services and as a problem arises, they? Are they gonna revamp?
The person, absolutely, they're gonna do a complete, you know, uh.
So you could be looking at new servers put together, I know meeting, uh, Michelle's department said had a lot, so they're, they're gonna kind of.
Yeah, I know those suggestions actually, we think we may have too many servers, and then we're virtual, they've got, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's lots.
Okay, so they will kind of revamp and then maintain, not just maintain. And then, um, when I read, read this, uh, on the last page for their, their service outline, it talks about after hours. Do they have like a help desk, I guess you could say is twenty-four seven? Let's just say when we were doing emergency response, I didn't see anything in here that says, I mean, like, when their hours are done, are their hours done? Or can, is there like a twenty-four seven?
They have that service.
I didn't, I didn't see it here, okay, and so it's here, it's different pricing?
Yes, they are available twenty-four seven, but it is different pricing for, for non-regular service hours.
So that's everything outside the goals, the goal package, it would be the time, material rate charged, right?
Yes.
Cause, so it said right here, emergency, like, business down, and let's just say we're having like the flooding emergencies where y'all are here twenty-four seven. It says that it can, they can come after hours, so y'all are here all day and night, and they send it, and after hour charge would only be till midnight, and then that's it. Is, do you know if?
Right, right now, there's a hundred and twenty-five dollar an hour time and material normal charge and a hundred and eighty-eight dollar an hour after normal hour charge.
But that's only till midnight, and not on weekends?
It says that they can't guarantee that the time that they'd be there, I think CJ's in that right, that if, they say that they can be there between midnight and eight AM. They can't guarantee they'll be there an hour or?
So that's the response time worksheet, okay, that's what that's the first.
So most of their, most of their work, day in, day out, other than the initial assessment, we were perusing the document and we do the whole song off everything, to see what needs to be changed, what recommendations we need to bring to council for consideration in the IT part of the budget that's coming here. And uh, those, those things then we will incorporate into recommendations. What service they will provide, most often, that help desk situation will be virtual, they will just take over PC or machine from the other, do the work they need to do, and.
And that can be twenty-four seven if needed, I understand that was the response time worksheet, I just didn't see it anywhere else to find.
They were afraid to put it in writing, but in reality, they said that's their normal routine, they're almost always taking over the computer.
Cause I know y'all had a lot going on electronically during the, um, the setup in the conference room, so.
Just for clarification, so their, their normal business hours, they get the fat charge, if they're out here working on a server or whatever, and they extend past five, or does that kick in all week to after hour pay where it requires them a four minute an hour charge, or is that how that happens?
We didn't really talk about it, cause it's in the middle, I, you know, my default would be, okay, you stay at the regular rate, you were here beginning of the regular time. I would think that a call out or a service call after that, it's initiated and then on, we'll get that clarification, I don't know, but we'd be happy to let council know.
Do we have someone here from CAP five?
We were supposed to, he was traveling in from out of, out of state with his family and got held up and was very impacted.
Okay. Because, um, a lot of changes were made, I mean, this is the second time we collected this contract, and, um, but there's still some things that need to be cleaned up, but I know creating, without a doubt, without even having a checkup, he's sent over there, starting with the master terms and conditions on section four, we need to strike the indemnification provision, I mean, we're not gonna indemnify.
How we said to extend a lot by law?
Section four, it's personal injury and property damage, I mean, we're not gonna indemnify that matter. The city shouldn't be exposed to that like.
The changes that says, or to be extended a lot by law?
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be extended.
Please, not permitted by law.
And it's not permitted by law, so it's, that was simpler than actually, and we, that's pretty standard in city contracts, to be honest with you. Is to just say, what you're saying sounds great, but it doesn't have any standing.
Right, it says not. Right, it says not valid at all because we're a city and they think, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Um, five thirteen, I'm not a fan of arbitration, I don't know why I'm agreeing to it, I think it should be, um, they had an arbitration jury trial, jury trial option on five twelve, but then they did mediation of arbitration, um, I just, I don't think the city should sign up for arbitration. I, I expressed that the first go around, I don't know if that was the fruit of the negotiation, they struck five twelve and said you can mediate and go arbitration, but I just think that that's not an ideal place for the city to be. And I would encourage that if it hasn't been brought up, that we negotiate that, because we don't need to subject arbitration.
It's.
Until someone tells me.
We can go back to try one more time.
And then, um.
That's something that council feels we need to go back to the law, I mean, that's really where we're. We've gone, this is a negotiation between our.
Partly, I don't think, I know. I know that we need to get, um, this going so that they can evaluate before our budget comes up and see what new equipment we do need. I don't know what time y'all need for that, I mean, is that, is this something y'all are needing to?
Yeah, we, we took it off last meeting to make sure all the legal comments were addressed, and that's why we're back tonight with what we think is legal comments addressed, and so another sixty days addressing legal comments would really be painful.
Okay, so if I, if I remember correctly from the contract we approved last time, it requires a sixty day notification to our current provider that we're going to terminate services and have time. So if we vote on this and we put this in place and then we give our sixty day notices, are we overlapping and paying two providers at once? So essentially, we're wasting more money than a sixty day delay on getting things negotiated that's favorable for the city.
I would think we're wasting money, I'd say we, we, we're not getting the service provided for the we need right now from the current vendor.
But we have to pay for it by contract.
But we don't start paying a new one until this one runs out. We're not gonna, we didn't plan on paying necessarily an overlap.
Okay, cause the, it says on page, on the one cloud managed services, the contract page, that, that commences on July first, twenty sixteen and ends June thirty of twenty seventeen.
That was still there from, I think, past days, the dates will be cleaned up to coincide with the actual date that the contract begins at the city manager, we were gonna leave that at the city manager's discretion. But one end is the next one would begin, was the, was the plan and not paying that overlap.
And my next question, based on a comment that was made by one of my colleagues, that, you know, they came in and did an assessment, there's too many servers, for example, in building services. If I, am reading this correctly, we're counting for all of our servers, so are they going to allow a price adjustment? Because it doesn't seem that it's written that way in the contract, maybe in fact, don't have to have that many servers on a gold level. Because, I mean, this is a pretty steep monthly expenditure.
It is, it is. The, the servers that are counted for there are the current servers that we have, we have not purchased the additional server for the building services department. Had we reviewed the project, applied to different products. They came into the cursory room and felt like, just looking at it from a thirty thousand foot view, that we probably had more servers online than we needed, we probably didn't need to procure another server for building services that we could even make use of, we have a good virtualization. But that's from the assessment of something, that was their broad, broadish, just a quick glance at your organization and your use.
Okay, and my question is, is if they decide that it can be virtualization and we don't need new servers, we tied in for ten, I mean, we've got thirty-six workstations and ten servers that we're paying for every month.
No, we will only take a little bit.
Okay, where does it say that? That's, that, I mean, that needs to be put in there because right now it says.
Next to each.
Right.
If the number's up or down, then the cost associated with it goes up or down.
Right, but the contract says if we were paying first and last month's service, and you're saying that you're going to pay them four thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, um, that, you know, that, it appears to be you're going to pay for what's here. It doesn't say if there's an adjustment, or contract price will be adjusted based on what your usage is, there's no language to that effect in contract. And so if we're in for four thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, whether we have ten servers or we have fourteen servers, that's different. But if we're only paying for what, what we're using, or we're locked in, cause the way I read this is we're locked in to this price per month for twelve months, and that's gonna span two fiscal, fiscal cycles.
Trying to do this on the plot with you.
Okay. Which the contract also says including sales tax, and then at the very bottom, they put excluding sales tax, but I'm gonna presume since I did the math, there's no sales tax.
Was the determination?
Right, I know, but the contract says including.
Was the termination on this? Termination notice, I'm sorry.
Sure. I feel badly to, to delay this, it's been needed for a very long time, when I think Mr. Ross could probably.
I agree, but at the same time, we have to be responsible and some of these, like, other, there's other providers out there who will agree to some of these terms, I mean, it's, it's a little disingenuous perfectly to say we're not gonna, you know, we want the indemnification provision, well, that, that's a no moment because it doesn't apply to us, which Grady's done a good job putting the extended apply by law. But that, that's just getting a little squirrely, and we deserve the best possible service for the amount of money that we're about to spend.
We've been on the trigger, not giving it and having it for a few months, and hands will be taking it longer.
And I'd love to have, I'd love to have the owner here on the spot, instead of me.
And Grady, can we get your, um, legal advice on the, um, what Mrs. Krennic has said about indemnification and the arbitration?
Well, indemnification, always tried to take it out, always strike it, they always come back and argue, we go back and forth, we do the same dance we do a million times on these contracts. And the compromise position is to the extent allowed by law. So that makes their corporate counsel feel good that they have an indemnification provision, it makes it acceptable to us, barely because under the constitution, Article five, we cannot identify, period. I show them the constitution, I actually have a folder on my desktop, and I have all the AG opinions, I send it to them, sometimes they agree to take it out, sometimes they don't. This is the best, if you want the contract with these people, that you can get.
So the, I mean, it has been stated, you've already worked with their attorney, they're going to keep this in here.
Correct, so the compromise was to the extent allowed by law.
Okay, and how about, um, for arbitration?
Arbitration is not any faster or less expensive than a trial. With a trial, you have a right to appeal, with arbitration, you don't, so it's a one-shot wonder. Uh, I'd rather lock the court system because we have pleas to the jurisdiction that we can constantly get stuff dismissed. Again, this was the, the dance we do back and forth, uh.
Do you think this is a break in the con, like, do you think this should hold us up as far as your legal opinion?
Is it a hill down? No, not if you want the contract.
And we're happy to go back and push it one more time, if it's important, council will get it wrong, we are happy to go do that, and they may say, okay, we'll take it out, and we will give it every effort to do that. And one other clarification, real quick, on just, uh, Councilmember Krennic, it says cap five will routinely audit to trace for systems that may have been added or removed from the customer's network and invoice that will be adjusted to reflect that change. Any change affecting invoicing or required.
So it is in there.
It's given electronic or written approval prior to that.
That's every day notice, so they're.
That's under the obtaining service, under the agreement of four and five, this is third, bottom, they will check them in audit and change that as needed.
For example?
Sorry, what's that? That's on page four, five, under the cap five technology, one cloud managed.
Cause that's gonna be my other question. And then you have two paragraphs, honestly, where can we adjust that, not the original, they have disagreements, but then current rate with thirty days in advance of the.
Right, and we have a thirty or sixty day out.
That's what I'm looking for, I mean.
I wanted to ask about the cost of moving adjustment, is that to move somebody here?
No, 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 they struck that whole paragraph, it's just the header.
Oh, okay, yeah. They had that in there kind of as an automatic potential inflation.
They, I mean, they did, they, they, they did strike a lot, they took out co-loading.
That was it. And we appreciate the, the comments, and we're happy to go back on arbitration as well, if that's what council would like us to do.
Grady, do you feel that, um, the paragraph that Mr. Ross just read regarding the adjustment in the rate, cause I, I do agree with Mrs. Krennic, I don't want to be paying for thirty-six servers if they.
Twice, right.
Put it down on one server. Um, do you think that the statement is strong enough that they, they will adjust the invoice, whether or not we're in the two-year contract?
If it's not, terminate the contract.
Or, it's another thing, we can go clarify further to put our, to make sure it's full of her in that regard, so there's no confusion.
Can we approve this with, with that as an amendment, making that language stronger?
I would recommend you give authority to sign a contract, subject to these, whatever two areas, three areas concern you have, we'll do our best to get those changed, and if we can get them changed, we'll get it changed and.
I can almost guarantee you, they're very, very eager.
Well, it sounds like he's already spoken about the arbitration and the indemnification.
Lawyer to lawyer.
Do you think that that is?
Businessmen sometime overrule lawyers, and, uh, when the businessman gets in there and sees this cash flow or this point, they may say it's worth the risk, do it.
So if we would like to pass this, your recommendation is to pass it with the amendments of indemnification, arbitration, and, um, adjusting the invoice for, uh.
I would, well, yes and no, which sounds like a lawyer, but yes, pass it, giving authority, I wouldn't say an amendment that these items be taken out, but that we will do our best to try to get them removed, and if we can't, and it's important enough for y'all to get this in before the budget here, we can go ahead and sign the contract.
I'd also ask, council, do they clause specification of permission? Yeah, that's not.
I agree, cause it's not, I thought it was on the first version, and now it's gone everywhere.
Thirty or sixty, Grady?
It was thirty.
This was sixty days ago.
I thought it was.
The third month six.
This was pre-flood.
I like thirty better, yeah. Y'all wanna go with thirty, and if anything ever gets squirrely, we're out of thirty, and we'll, we will, the other two contingency items.
I mean, I'll just tell you, I think it's irresponsible of us to not pass it without termination clause, just because this amount's so steep and, I mean, way back in the day when we took on Wright Technologies, I mean, they, they, they did okay at the outset, I know that, but we're having, you know, they're not really keeping up with what we need, but, um, you know. I have all the faith in the world in cap five, I just think that we need to make sure that this is the right thing for this amount of money.
You're absolutely right, we agree you should go ahead and say thirty days, put thirty days in there, tell them that's it.
Right, I'm, I'm surprised they actually did that.
And the only other thing we're saying is that we will give best effort to get arbitration removed and better wording on how it's gonna be audited and making sure that we're paying for exactly what we have every month.
We have a lot less than forty, higher right to.
Right, and I, that's what I understand, and we're, we're growing, we're kind of growing that service, and no, they just are not keeping up with what we need at this point, I, I recognize that.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the contract for professional services related to the provision of information technology service to the city between, the city cap five with the amendments, um, for negotiation, I'm sorry?
That we attempt. That we attempt to remove.
Attempt to remove indemnification, arbitration.
Indemnifications to the extent allowed by law, that's done.
We can ask again, the extent.
Okay.
Well, we'll ask, yeah, we'll ask.
Just as super, okay. To give us, to specify that termination clause is to be thirty days, and to be more, to, more specific on rates.
Clarify the monthly hardware clock.
Yes, clarify the monthly hardware clock.
Got it. Motion by Ms. Tristan, second time is bridge, any other questions or discussion? Being none, call for a vote on item A, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, that item passed.
Thank you.
Moving on, item B, consideration of possible action to approve amendments number twenty sixteen dash twelve eighteen and ordinance of the city of Fullshu approved amendment number one to the strategic partnership agreement number three between the city of Fullshu and Waller County RID number one.
I'm up again.
Angela and, uh, Angela, it's a duet.
We, we coordinated earlier today. If y'all remember, the, uh, Waller County RID, some years ago, we, uh, they agreed to come into the city's ETJ. There is a section under the water code that we were able to grab all of the RID, Waller County Road Improvement District, RID. And also in that was the provisions, we instituted two strategic partnership agreements, our SPA, which allows us to then impose sales tax. The, uh, there's nothing happening up there other than rooms to go, the RID and rooms to go, uh, don't have the best relationship, and so they didn't want to bring in Norwood Rooms to Go consent to, although we didn't need their consent. Uh, to bring them in so that we can start capturing the sales tax. They have now kissed and made up, and now they wanna come in to the city, so the city will start imposing the sales tax. So this is SPA number three, which y'all adopted either last month or the month before. They could not agree on one internal document between themselves, so the SPA was drafted to not be effective until they got that doc, they got their act together and got the, that document agreed. They still don't have that document agreed to, but they wanna go ahead and activate the SPA. So this amendment accelerates that start date, which, if it's approved tonight, it will start, we have, we'll do a limited purpose annexation, an LPA, which will then, uh, allow the comptroller to start assessing taxes out there. After their notice and the expiration, I'm giving you a rough estimate of basically a quarter of a year. So sometime around Christmas, maybe, but next year for sure, we'll start, uh, collecting sales tax on purchases at Rooms to Go. So this is to your total benefit to accelerate the start date, and that's what this amendment does, the landowners have agreed to it, or I'm sorry, the RID has agreed to it, Rooms to Go has agreed to it.
Any questions?
Yeah, there, on section two of our ordinance, um, we use the word agreement, the short abbreviation for strategic partnership agreement and development agreement amendment. I would ask that that be changed to amendment, because it will then flow with the document that's attached to it where it's referred to as an amendment, and there would be three replacements, I'm sorry, yeah, three total replacements in that paragraph, instead of using the word agreement, change it to amendment.
No problem, believe me.
It's just so it can mirror the language in the actual, uh, document that's attached. And then, when we get down to the first, the text of the first amendment of the strategic partnership agreement, um, would the effective date be June twenty-one, twenty sixteen, or is there a, a notice period ready before it's effective?
It's effective as soon as y'all sign it, because the other two have signed it now, it's not effective for imposing the tax or collecting the tax, we have to go through two more hoops.
So it is effective on passing, okay. Um, I'd ask that we change the county on the jury out, the polarization block, and, um, to Fort Bend County, it's, I think it says.
Where?
Yeah, it says Waller County right now.
Well, that's where they are.
Oh, where they are is in, oh, I'm running out of time, okay, got it. And then, um, do we have agreement from, what was Houston Associates LLC? Okay, did they have a signature page, cause it wasn't in, I think, everyone else signed except that.
They have approved it, but they wanna be the last one to sign it.
Okay, well, do you have approval, approval from them, okay.
Doesn't make the. Doesn't make a hill of beans difference, but for some reason, they were stuck on that, and it's like, fine, guys, we'll bring it to you and you can sign it.
So is it effective before they sign that?
Well, it will be effective tomorrow when I hand deliver it.
All right. And is ninety days enough to complete the, and get all the file, limited purpose annexation?
Cause it's a voluntary annexation. We'll have to. We'll have to march briskly, but we can get it done.
Mayor, make a motion to approve ordinance twenty sixteen dash twenty eighteen with the amendment to section two, placing agreement with amendment. Change, yeah, that's it.
Second by Ms. Ridge, a motion made by Ms. Krimick, second by Ms. Ridge, any other questions or discussion? Being none, call for a vote, all those in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed, thank you. I would see consideration of possible actions to approve the fiscal year two thousand sixteen, or two thousand seventeen budget and tax rate adoption calendar.
Good evening. Annually, the finance director meets with the city manager to define an organizational timeline for the adoption of the fiscal budget and tax rate. This timeline, timeline is coordinated around the legislation that governs it, that legislation includes the city charter, tax government and local government codes. The calendar is meant to serve as a guide with deadlines for filing public notices and public meetings. And they fluctuate based on what the city receives its certified values from the central appraisal district and the effective, and the calculation of the effective tax rate by the tax assessor's office. Staff recommendations to adopt the calendar for the two thousand sixteen budget. Make a motion to approve fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget and tax rate adoption calendar.
A motion by Ms. Tristan, and a second by Ms. Ridge, any questions or comments?
Yes, on this calendar, there are only two budget workshops, and I don't think that that's very responsible of us to only plan for two opportunities to have a budget workshop, one of which will coincide with our August monthly meeting. In the past, we have met multiple times, and I'm even more nervous about passing this timeline without more budget workshops in here for council, because we haven't been able to agree on a date to have a visioning and kind of get everyone on the same page to outline what our priorities are. So I think that's going to complicate even further putting together a budget for ever-growing, rapidly expanding staff and, and projects. I just, two meetings.
Last time you, you almost had it, so what we were trying to do, we listed out the calendar, the two on here, we can do more as needed. If you would like us to encapsulate more, we can definitely do that, but we felt like, last year, I think we did totally eight workshops. And we didn't wanna have everybody feel like they were being converted again by doing eight workshops, because I think if I did, the process ended, it's exhausted.
Yeah, but, but at the same time, with all due respect, I mean, we have a pretty solid budget, we haven't had that many amendments this year, and we've got a lot of projects. We have even more projects to fund, more line items to do, we have new things coming on that we haven't even dealt with before in terms of our leverage fund and getting all those projects kicked off. I just think that we have a hard time coming up with dates that we can all be available, so we pass, I mean, I can tell you right now, there's one of these dates that I'm gonna have to either fly back home from vacation just to make this, and so if we only have two budget meetings, I will have to make arrangements to, to fly, which I've done before, and I don't mind, but I just think two is, is not.
Well, I definitely agrees with you, we were just laying out two on the calendar, the official calendar, we can do more if council, if that's what council would like to see. We just felt like laying two out on the official calendar, that would guarantee there's about two spots, if we do more, we can definitely do those on ad hoc basis.
And they say possible, right?
Yeah, just a possible.
If I may, just kind of elaborate, this, this working calendar, when we put this together, I started it and, and I worked backward in order to meet our deadlines for yes, for our public hearings and so forth like that. The two meetings that are included in here are just as an initial being responsible, you know, in our fiduciary responsibilities. By no means is it declaring that we can, that we're only going to have to work.
Well, and I'm not saying that, and I, I understand what you're trying to talk, I'm just saying, we've gone through a whole month of trying to agree on the date to have a visioning workshop, and I'm not to this day aware that we have that, and we went through lots of doodle requests, which I'm now aware of what doodle is, to just try and get five people to, or, I'm sorry, six people, just council and our mayor, to agree on a date and time is, if we put it here, everyone has advanced notice and, and we're agreeing on it as a group, that we're gonna commit the time it's gonna take to put together the budget.
So are you suggesting like my addition of days to add to this calendar at this time? Or?
Or that we at least add a certain set, a minimum set of, of workshops, for those five.
You wanna add a certain amount and say, dates be determined by staff?
Yeah.
You can basically say, you, you wanna add three plus or whatever.
I just don't want. Right.
We, we're not trying to interrupt your council, or, or, we're going with those two dates on here and we, and we do more.
That's fine.
Could we amend it with more council budget workshops as needed?
I, I was gonna, I was gonna ask too about the public hearing on tax increase, and that's a month prior to, to the release of this. Is, is that sufficient enough time for a tax change and, and to input that any change that the public may wanna see on our governing body done, completed, how are we gonna be able to react to what, what our public wants?
In the timeframe that we have, and we have to wait until we get those certified rules and we get that calculated effective tax rate before we can have that public hearing, so this is, the calendar is simply a guide, keep in mind that everything is, everything depends on when CAD sends those certified rules, and when the tax collector gives us that official sign-off on that calculated effective rate, so that's what drives everything with our dates. This is, like I said, when I calculated this and I made this guide, it's simply saying, okay, we have to set two public hearings, those public hearings have to be seven days here, and then seven days after that, we can't, we can't.
Thirty days is prescribed.
Thirty days is prescribed, and.
Yeah, I saw it as, I mean, it has a lot of barstool and it's practical and possible, in terms of giving us flexibility. I do think maybe adding the, maybe an amendment to add more as needed. Sure.
Mayor, make a motion to amend the pending motion on the floor to approve the budget calendar and ta, budget and tax rate calendar for two thousand sixteen to twenty seven, adding council meet on ad hoc basis for additional budget workshops.
Motion by, motion to amend to add additional dates as needed by Ms. Krimick, the second?
Second.
Of the second by Ms. Murdaugh. Take that item first, all those in favor, say an aye, or those opposed? I go back to the original motion, which is made by Ms. Tristan and seconded by Ms. Ridge. Take that item, we're considering, call for a vote, all those in favor, say an aye.
Point of order, before we vote, we vote on that motion as amended.
Right.
If it gets.
Sure.
You've adopted, that's your adopted.
That one, that one, we'll move on to item D, thank you, brother. Consideration of possible action to approve ordinance number twenty sixteen dash twelve nineteen and ordinance of the city of Fullsher, and ordinance number twenty sixteen dash eleven ninety five, adopting and approving the city's operating budget fiscal year two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen by approving budget amendment aye to the original general budget of the city of Fullsher for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance twenty sixteen, twelve nineteen with the amendment of changing the effective and adopted date of July twenty first, I mean, sorry, twenty first of June, twenty sixteen, as opposed to July, because it's written in the ordinance.
A motion by Ms. Krimick. We have the second by Ms. Tristan with the date correction. Any other questions or comments? Call for a vote, all those in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D passed. Moving to item E, consideration of possible action to approve resolution number twenty sixteen dash three oh nine, resolution of the city of Fullsher adopting procedures and rules for council meetings and investigations. This is the item that we took over, consideration of workshop. I'll leave it up to council if you want to continue discussion, or if you want to postpone for another workshop, or, I'll make a motion to postpone for another workshop. We have a motion by Mr. Murdaugh to postpone item E for to a workshop and made of second by Ms. Ridge. Any questions or comments? Being none, call for a vote, all those in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item E postponed. Moving to item F, consideration of possible action to approve ordinance number twenty sixteen dash twelve twenty and ordinance of the city of Fullsher adopting and implementing a code of ethics for council members and appointed officials. This item was also discussed in a workshop. I move to postpone for another workshop. Mr. Murdaugh, make a motion to postpone for another workshop.
Aye.
Second by Ms. Tristan, any questions or comments? Being none, call for a vote, all those in favor for postponing, item F, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed. Moving to item G, consideration of possible action to accept donation of the historic section house from Feliciano Group for use in the city park.
We've been discussing for a number of years with Feliciano Group, who own the Fullsher Town Center, possibility of getting ahold of the structure is probably the last remaining store structure from the railroad that we drive outside the city limits. They have graciously offered the donations that we, we take and have a look. And so, council or staff is recommending we approve of the acceptance of the donation from them, take that on.
So.
We have a motion made by Ms. Krimick, we have a second by Ms. Ridge, any questions or comments? Being none, call for a vote, all those in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passed. Moving to item H, consideration of possible action to approve relocation of the historic section house.
I'd like to make a motion to approve relocation of the historic section house.
I have a motion made by Ms. Ridge to approve the relocation, we have a second by.
Wait, wait, wait. Um, um. Are we on item?
Page.
This is not the move, okay, sorry.
This is the relocation.
The establishment.
Okay.
There's accepting the house, the relocation, and then the modification of the house.
This is the relocation, right?
Yes, and so we've reached out to three different services to talk about moving. Barney Pfeffer was low debt at twelve thousand nine twenty, that does not include the, your utility relocates, obviously we're gonna provide him with these escort and also works with textile, Michael's been working for you, we're trying to get that done. Cherry, I think, came back to us with a, with her advice quote, and I'm gonna report on my one with that number one.
Just out of curiosity, do we actually have any of these quotes?
Yeah, they should've been attached, I thought we would have.
Yeah, I saw Barney's, that person.
Yes.
And what are we estimating the additional cost for utility and textile accommodations?
Well, we, we built a budget in there, we can discuss that. Based on his, his thirteen thousand dollars, we left ourselves another seventeen thousand dollars in there in case to cover those costs. We don't think it's gonna be quite that much, we estimate the per hour cost on the business class related to the utility relocated is a hundred eighty-five dollars an hour. And then the additional cost for the textile, we were told would be, would be a hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour.
And this is all carrying out of the parks budget?
Yes.
I think it was one sixty-five, no, forty-five.
Forty-five to fifty, right, I gotta pull up the actual. They were five part of that, so.
Cherry was forty-five to fifty, site boys was twenty-four five, and Barney Pfeffer was twelve. Nine twenty. Nine twenty.
So what's the difference in these numbers based on the quote, what kind of service is Cherry providing?
They don't, they don't want to do it, as long as they, they're not used in.
Just, just, from my understanding, I think, move three houses. Use site boys and cherry, or there's a difference in the quickness of those two. I will gladly let you know that Mr. Pfeffer is a son of Fullsher, he was born and raised here, he does not live there anymore. He actually has moved quite a number of buildings from.
And he was doing it for a part because.
He, he, he's definitely someone that really loves Fullsher, he's moved a lot of buildings from this area.
When did he?
He poured the foundation for the back part of the house back in the, what, sixty-seventies?
When did he create this building?
Not, not this particular building, he's moved, different, well, he, I think he moved it along, he's moved different buildings, the old church that used to be along Harris and Second Street, which was probably one of the oldest churches in our area, he's moved that.
So Mr. Pfeffer, whether it's July fifteenth or not?
So as you can. So as you can.
It happens if, if we don't use this July fifteenth.
Happen to judge in this house, it ends up in dumpster.
Yeah, I, I mean, when the, when Feliciano, they July fifteenth, it's not necessarily a drop that day, because that's their goal day, I think they give us a few days to work on it, but at some point they asked to prove that.
But he assured me on the front, I told him of our deadline, I told him what happened to judgmently's house, and he is wanting to preserve his historical values, the few that we have as much as, as we do, so I think he will stay by his promise.
We have a motion by Ms. Ridge and, and second by Ms. Tristan, any questions or comments?
Does the motion include a cap on expenditures?
Well, we have the, the modifications part two that will be.
But that's a separate, that's a separate item, okay.
Yeah, I read that as two separate line items, the same parks budget.
That's correct. We have a hundred and ten thousand dollars in the parks budget for cap improvement to existing parks, and so the thought was is we would cap the expenditure on this one thirty. We don't honestly believe that we'll get that high.
We have to move two arms, the east arm, traffic light, and the southbound of three fifty-nine, and then some of the utility fires. The travel and height of the house was twenty-seven feet, so, and some trees, what, we trimmed.
Some of those items, they might even be there to raise, I remember the structure, it was thirty-two feet tall, so and the utilities was right about thirty thousand, so, and that's, that's about, and that's about twelve bucket trucks and about thirty-seven man hours.
And we're moving one point one mile down route.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make amendment, pending motion to cap expenditure to thirty thousand for this particular project.
We have amendment to the motion by, what's Krimick, to cap at thirty thousand? How, or a second? Second. For Mr. Murdaugh, any questions or comments?
Do y'all feel like, I mean, we'll stay under that?
Well, yeah, we do.
So that's, that's a good amount of cap.
Do we have an idea count on the utility costs, okay, with those?
I felt like you could probably get it done in a fifteen thousand dollar range, so I think we've got about a twenty-five hundred or twenty percent gap between the costs.
Okay, great, this one's your final.
Any other question? Call for a vote for the motion by Ms. Krimick, second by Ms. Call for a vote for the motion by Mr. Crinick, second by Ms. Murda to cap at thirty thousand. All those in favor, I say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Moving to item I. It's consideration of possible action to approve modification to Francis Smart Park to allow for relocation of the historic section house.
Mr. Mayor, I, I was concerned about potentially having several trees from those. My question was, could we, if any trees are moved, could they be replanted on the property?
We haven't had an arborist take a look at that. Um, you've got a very small space there, it would be very rare for it to save the trees, but I think if we, we would see an exponential increasing cost, we're gonna have to spade relocate and replant. Maybe we could potentially look at, and I, the way we were talking about later, that the majority of what's gonna happen is the, the gazebo on the north side is gonna have to come out. And we're gonna slide the desk apart.
Mayor, this is an appropriate item that, uh, to bring up at this time, but I, I heard there was discussion of like land swap or trading it out, and I actually looked at the, the Centora, northwest, deep, there's a virginary language that does not pass muster, so is this the alternative to leveling the gazebo or getting rid of the raisins in the gazebo and put the house on there?
No, no, this is, this will maintain the facility as a city park. It will maintain as a city park. I've explained to the developer making that request that there is no way for the city to ever swap, sell, share.
Right, right, I mean, well, unless we went back to the Arizona dotted and, and then the virginary language, but.
But I don't think that's a realistic objective, and so the city, uh, in our discussions with the park commission and various community partners, we've talked to Chamber and others that are interested in this, is this actually is gonna bring some life into that park. Because currently, you might see one day out of the month by a passing landscaping, it stops that much. Otherwise, it's, it's empty, this is gonna bring some life into that facility. We're gonna move the gazebo, slide the house in there, and then hopefully renovate that, turn it into a museum in Walgreen Center.
Um, the twenty-five thousand dollar estimate, estimate for this particular project, does that adequately cover the demolition, the gazebo, tree removal, and that looks like we're gonna, the past site is gonna be prepared out of that, those same funds?
We think that's one of that.
I do, but there's destroying the.
I was gonna say, we'd make, everybody get out there, we had some sledgehammers and.
I'm sure July ninth. I, I make a motion to approve the modification of Francis Smart Park not to exceed, um, a cost of twenty-five thousand.
We have a motion by Mr. Crinick.
Second.
A second by Ms. Ridge, not to exceed the twenty five thousand. Any questions or comments? Being none, call for a vote, all those in favor, I say aye. Any opposed? Item I passes, thank you. Item J, consideration of possible actions to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash three one zero, releasing the resolution number twenty twelve dash two oh eight, permitting the city's credit card use policy to increase.
Mr. Mayor, staff's actually gonna ask for this item, the, uh, postpone.
So move by Mr. Crinick to postpone.
Second by Ms. Tristan, any questions? All those in favor, I say aye. Thank you. Moving to item K, consideration of possible actions to approve resolution number twenty sixteen dash three eleven, resolution repealing resolution numbers twenty fourteen dash two thirty-nine and twenty fourteen dash two forty, an approving process under which staff handle engineering services recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
In twenty fourteen, the city council created an engineering services project review committee to review statements of qualifications from engineers seeking to perform services for the city. At that time, the city had no experienced staff in public works, in the public works department, that could conduct these services. Since that time, the city has hired professional staff capable of performing these services. Staff is comfortable handling the review and the recommendations in accordance with the proposed resolution twenty sixteen dash three ten. And, uh, staff recommends that city council rescind resolutions number twenty fourteen dash two thirty-nine and twenty fourteen dash two forty, and approve resolution twenty sixteen dash three ten. And we certainly want to thank, uh, Mr. Kirkendall, uh, Mr. Worley, and Derek for all of their services of performing this for the city over these last few years. This is a huge burden and enormous amount of time, and we owe them a, a huge debt of gratitude for performing that. But what is normally done by staff in most cities, them doing that for the city for this period of time. Thank you.
Mr. Kirkendall says, I appreciate it, thank you so much for all the effort that you did to help us with the engineering process, thank you.
And we've made some edits just to the, uh, what was two fourteen, two forty, if you'll notice, if there's any ideas for changes, we're open to those, but we try to keep it really simple and just try to change it. We wanted, we felt like council would wanna keep it in place so that it would still outline how, for function, for, for your sake. And so, all we did was change, volunteers to staff performing those functions.
Which staff will perform these functions?
I will initially, and the community services director will as well. Probably, that would be that person's primary function with my assistance when they get here.
So, I'm actually a little concerned about working on these, um, and I think that because we're in such a transition, I mean, the reason we picked these people to bring along is because they have the qualifications to look at these, they're, they're P's, they're professional engineers. And other than this, this line decker who's, you know, part of our staff, I'm not aware of anyone else having professional engineering, even though I know staff is very qualified, you'll, you'll look at these contracts all the time. I think in, in moving forward as, as, as we grow, that I think the volunteers, unless, you know, I haven't heard any objection from the volunteers that have been serving this function, but add staff with them so that we have at least a one year carried forward, where we have the engineering services project review committee working directly with staff, so that there's, there's continuity and we, and we move through. I, that's just my, I think that would serve the best interest of the residents that we have people that have PE qualifications on an engineering service review contract committee, project committee, sorry.
Staff would much prefer to have the, on a voluntary basis, where staff could use the consultants, and maybe if you use the engineers, uh, as a sounding board, then we need them. Personally, thirty-five years I've been reviewing contracts and selecting engineers in four different cities. I feel like we'll do a, a good job, and we will hire, uh, a community services director that is equally capable in doing that as well, it's our intent. But I completely agree that it's, you need engineers, you need PEs as a sounding board. I just don't know if you need to have the formal board established like this to be able to still do that. I would fully intend to, uh, still call Mr. Kirkendall and David and, and Derek and ask those same questions like we do Line Deck or anyone else. We're not, we never try to operate in a vacuum, we're always trying to get the best consultant.
Call for a motion, you go. Everybody like to make a motion on item K?
I can give the recommendation again if you need, give me two. Staff.
Yes, the recommendation.
Staff recommends that city council rescind resolutions number two fourteen dash two thirty-nine and two fourteen dash two forty, and approve resolution two sixteen dash three ten, which effectively just begins to have staff do what the community uses it under, and very specifically outlined in those changes. And again, we've, we already, uh, sent a thank you to the committee reiterating that we still want to be able to call them and use their expertise on a case by case basis, and it will be needed.
And then, um, the community services manager.
Well, whoever specifically does it is, is really, you just wanna make sure your city manager is gonna make it happen, and that's CJ Will. And it'll happen with whatever staff we need to, to put in place to make that happen, or have in place.
During this transition time period, would it be more feasible for, I, I kinda have to agree with the council critic on, uh, regards to this, that it seems like it would be more smooth of a transa, tran, transition into twenty seventeen time period, going to this, getting, getting to this point rather than now. And, and why I say that is because we're hiring these individuals and the committee can, knows what's going on, you know, and can bridge that transition.
We are not getting qualifications reviewed and out in a timely manner, and it's not their fault completely, it's a scheduling issue, and we cannot get volunteers scheduled timely enough. In our world, in the world of Fullsher right now, as fast as we're moving, we have things that are becoming stale, qualifications that were requested four and five months ago, that we need to get out, and again, I'm not throwing them under the bus, it's not their fault, but we're ready to move on these and bring recommendations to council, and I think we're all upon the same page. But we have a procedure that we have to follow, that's on paper, that we think is though longer necessary, we think that we can bring council the same recommendation that would have been arrived at, whichever path was chosen. But we are actually being, we're to the point where we're not bringing work forward as quickly as we'd like to, to the city council. And that's, that's the, another reason for this requested change, that we really feel strongly about.
What's the current delay?
Which one?
How?
The projects?
Yeah, how far are we on that?
Impact fee, request of qualifications went out probably first part of this year, as did general services, engineering services.
Have we received any responses on any of those comments?
We did receive responses.
How many have been in the impact fee?
I think it was three or four, and same with the, uh, the general services. And those went to the, to the committee probably three, two or three months ago, in that realm. And again, not blaming the committee, but just not used to waiting on volunteers to move city work forward. Um, it's just something we're just not accustomed to.
We need to move on as well?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we've been talking about this for a long time, about bringing this capacity in. With Michael's experience, with the experience that we're, is gonna be sitting in that seat as the community services, uh, community services supervisor, we'll gladly take recommendations and feedback from our experts, but I think that is what drove us when I made together the proposal policy was, we wanna have those eyes on there, but we, we do have some specific needs at this time. We had, I didn't say it yesterday, where the city engineer wasn't able to get to something because he just didn't understand how urgent it was to the city.
Okay. I make a motion to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash three eleven, resolution repealing resolution numbers twenty fourteen two thirty-nine and twenty fourteen two forty, and approving process under which staff handle engineering services recommendations.
I have a motion by Mr. Tristan, a second by Ms. Ridge, any further questions? Being none, call for a vote, all those in favor, I say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
We have three ayes and one nay. That item passes. Thank you. Moving to our next item, item L, consideration of possible action to approve engineering review from Castello related to Redbird Lane access during the event. Mr. Wilcox, uh, Stephen Wilcox is here with Castello Engineering.
Yeah, so, after the flood, which I'm sure you all recognize and had fun with. Also got Sam Purser, he's our municipal services, uh, vice president, he, he will help perform the items here. Uh, staff posed three questions to us, um, look at, uh, possible access road, emergency access road for Redbird Lane to be able to move traffic in some manner besides driving through backyards and however else CJ is getting permission to do it, uh, to get them to Redbird. So that's one item, and the second item that they asked us to look at is the emergency operations are taking readings at the GCWA pump station. Those readings are on mean T level. I'm gonna go on some engineering jargon here, so please forgive me, but that is on an older data, nineteen twenty-nine. The FEMA model that, that represents the Brazos River elevations are on a different data adjustment. And so, it's a, it's a lot of, be able to go shoot that, that step and tie it to the FEMA model, so in that way, staff can make better decisions about when certain things will or won't be inundated, if that makes sense. So, the problem that we were having is CJ, they're microphones, say we're at ninety-nine, what does that equal to elevation wise, based on the, the two thousand fourteen lot, or? That's kind of hard question to answer without having that adjustment, there's an adjustment factor that goes with it. So that would develop the adjustment factors. And then the third item is looking at the, so if you're familiar with Redbird, at the end it turns, it goes down a, a dirt driveway. What can be done there to help keep groundwater basically off of Redbird? And what are some construction costs and some other options? To note, that would not provide you what we call under your level of service. I don't know if you're familiar with that, a hundred years, the FEMA term, that we generally design engineering projects to. Just a quick look at it, then, we've looked at that as part of our strategy plan, and a hundred year protection is not possible there without serious engineering work, but we certainly think we could have limited the amount of time which I'll have Redbird underwater greatly with some improvements in the ground. Specifically putting a gate structure on the culvert underneath the road, and possibly raising the road depending on what the costs are and the land acquisition issues are. So those are the three items, uh, I don't, I don't remember what y'all talked about, I had five thousand, eight hundred, two thousand.
Eight hundred, ten thousand for the red river number.
And those were.
Five thousand for number one.
Which was?
The, uh, that is the, the alignment of the access line.
That's alignment study, uh.
And then eight hundred for the data, uh, reconfigurating. And then two thousand for the, uh, two thousand for the, uh, they're looking for Redbird Lane and the potential installation of a sluice gate. And Stephen, I wanna clarify, 'cause staff have a little opinion, uh, I don't know whether that would show up at council, but we also were talking about the gate, the, where the falls was.
Yeah.
It's your opinion that there's no relief to be found there by installing any kind of culvert or anything?
You can't open it, otherwise you can increase flow of water downstream, which is all free.
Okay.
That, so the drainage issue never, that, that project. And to be honest, it wouldn't provide you any relief, 'cause any water you let out, the rise is just gonna push the road back in and put you in the same spot, so it's not uh, it's not worth it. Y'all spending money on it, I guess, in my opinion.
Just for clarification from council, this is basically, and for the audience, this is basically bringing it to you guys to start the scope of the work of what we're asking Castello to go out and, and research and, and find out, and bring back the solutions and the numbers of what it would cost to have these items, uh, possibly help us alleviate some of the flooding and issues that we have down the Redbird area. Personally, I'd like to thank Mr. Wilcox, he was, uh, here throughout most of the flood and, uh, spent a lot of time going around and taking numbers and researching and getting a lot of data, so he could already possibly even, you know, have the numbers of when it was actually happening, see where we are at different elevations and stuff, so appreciate you, uh, putting in a lot of overtime, being up here late hours and hurting windows and stuff, so.
So, so will this study prevent, well, allow us to see in a, uh, in a flooding event worse than what we just had, the potentiality in us, give us a solution on how to fix this issue? Because what we had in Simonton is not what we, we should have here, because it's, after San Diego for the last three weeks, it's sad, and, and I don't wanna see residents here in Fullsher have to go through that. And then, this, uh, emergency access too. I mean, there could be anything that could occur during these time periods. So, different access points would be.
We've been blessed and very lucky thus far, that we haven't had a major incident down there. But Stephen, and we've talked about the potential of three or four routes that would allow access in there for fire and emergency equipment. The end goal is to be able to get a fire truck or an ambulance. The end goal is to be able to get a fire truck or an ambulance to either shade or contrary with unimpeded access any time, regardless of the waters up or the waters down. There may be a stalled car, or maybe a tree down or something on Redbird, where they want that access point at that time. So we'll have to negotiate the use, very willing to identify what the optimal route is for us, and then help us identify what easements need to be obtained, and then we'll figure out a plan of construction from there, what materials we use.
Okay.
So part of the review is also looking at the options to raise the road or somehow?
To, well, to raise, we're not talking about raising the Redbird right now. This is simply look at that, that, that cut through there with the, where the big culvert is, look at raising that road, pack as an additional levy, and then also if we're putting a sluice gate there to keep the water that comes in and getting back out.
But in the review, are we not looking at all on competing water from?
Yeah.
Well, no, yeah, they, they, they let it down.
But, yeah, I was, I was gonna say that, we're, we're doing, we're looking at high level limitations of magic period planning, but we have, so, so that's, you all, you already have some contract for that. This is immediate, what level service can be, how to help, it's gonna cost you a whole lot of money. And, and hopefully keep Redbird open as long as possible. Honestly, I don't, I don't think we can put a system in right now that would have stopped what happened in the last flood. But the one you had in the law day last year, we did fifty on the gate, I think we can stop that, if that makes sense. So we can lower the frequency that Redbird is flooded with, with the structure down there, called a creek.
If I just, uh, comment back to Ms. Ridge, council wrote correctly, the five thousand would be only for the access? It wouldn't look at the raising or possible alternate movement of Redbird Road?
The two thousand dollars would be the actual, would be the, the gate and the, and the raising of the red downwind to completely go waters from coming up on Redbird. Any event, I, you know, what we would consider a, a fifty-year event.
Yes.
The, the two, the five thousand dollars to look at emergency access traffic to and out of.
So if we, if we were to allocate this seventy-eight hundred, are all these going to be the same priority, they're all gonna be kicked off at the same time? Or is it, do we have the ability to, to prioritize what needs to happen?
Well, we can prioritize what needs to happen, but really all these things need to happen at the same time, you know? And we can't, as Stephen alluded to, there's no, there's no cost-effective means of raising Redbird out of where it's at right now without severe impact to the residents in that area.
When you, when you look at that, that structure that would be in eleven, eleven plus feet underwater, um, and Mr. Wilcox could probably attest to the, just the basic buildup of what it would take to bring the road structure up to that height or, or, it would be a strong.
But then you have to draw on your, just flooding of your houses and, 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 so that's why I'm saying, are we gonna have any part of this study that's looking at, are we gonna have to do it preemptively? Maybe if we have to move that road somewhere else to, and, and structure the things around it so that the water flows correctly or has some type of levee system?
So we're gonna kind of do options, and let staff look at what's possible, and kind of how, how much y'all feel like y'all can budget for it, right? And based on, you know, bankruptcy, right? If I tell you you can raise the Redbird River five feet, it costs you a million dollars, but you don't give a rush, and you may decide not to do that.
Right.
But right now, we don't have the answers for, for staff to make, be able to make their interpretation, and that's what we were trying to get to, so.
This is, this is more, my understanding, basically, to just.
Yeah, kind of in a dire emergency, uh, we want to try to do something to put in place before this happens again. Hopefully, it won't happen for a long, long time, but we still have hurricane season, we still have the rivers up high now, so anything's possibility. Um, yeah, for a long solution, we can, we can bring that back to a later date, you know, to see if, you know, if none of these actually come to fruition, you know, to help us out. But, uh, this is basically just getting them on the, on the, on the clock to start coming up with some kind of solution, so.
So what is the retainer rate to get you on the clock to look at some solution? We don't have anything, so obviously you're gonna have to say, okay, I'm gonna draw a proposal A, B, and C and submit it to, or A and B, whatever it is.
Well, I think that's what, that's what the rates are, it's five thousand, seven hundred, yeah, the eight hundred dollars total for these three acts.
Now just look, you'll give us a recommendation after that's done.
Yes.
What kind of timetable are we looking at for?
Uh, for me, probably a month.
That, that they spend the same amount of time on, on item A for the first five.
We, we at least have the first go through it, be able to sit down with staff, let them ask questions, and they go address what are the questions it may have.
You said I imagine A, and then, so additional time for the other two? And they go on the same time?
Same time, yeah.
So not for all three?
Right. To get, to get the first staff, be able to sit down with staff, you know, to make some, quite, any last question. Then we, then we go answer those questions.
CJ, how much do we have left in that account? It's planned off.
It's like about eight hundred thousand dollars within the year, I don't know how much it's been extended to date, uh, but I'm very confident that we have the work up my hands. And if not, we have contingency, we can draw on that.
How much?
We change here, you have much? We have a hundred thousand dollars in appearing of a plan movie, we also have eight five thousand dollars in contingency. If we have a whole contingency to fund this, we will, but we have adequate budget to cover the seventy-eight hundred dollar block for the, on this, on these items.
Any other questions? Call for a motion?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have one. Uh, how long do you think staff will take after they come back in a month? So does this seem, is it?
We're gonna, we're gonna be working with them side by side, so hopefully when, if their recommendation does, we'll have something ready to turn around for you almost immediately. I mean, we've kind of identified what we believe is the optimal route, they may have some different special on, on LIDAR, uh, and it's a matter of getting the property owners, uh, access, uh, a print to it, but I think that we can have something done very quickly. We understand, I think, that time is of the essence because we are in hurricane season, and we want to be a quick one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve engineering review from Castello to Redbird Lane access during emergency events.
Second.
Basically, you're just making a motion to, to, to Castello to do the, the seventy-eight hundred dollars?
I think he was breathing off.
Of this.
And say the three items.
About the three items.
You, you say the three items, yes, sir.
Okay. And a motion from Mr. Murdaugh, we have a second by Ms. Ridge, any other questions? Any and none, call for a vote, all those in favor, must say a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, thank you, Mr. Murdaugh.
Y'all remember much?
Thank you very much. You don't have any, sorry. You can talk to them afterwards. Moving to the item, section, this will be, uh,
Here are any other motions?
Wait for adjournment, we have a motion by this. The second by this. Any question coming, all in favor, must say a aye. Any opposed? Bureau of Juror, this officer, yeah, eight forty-three.